Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the February ninth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission and begin with a roll call for who's present.
Sharon Capri.
Here.
Jason Dale.
Here.
Laney Quinn.
Here.
Jeff Musaw.
Here.
Chris Wright.
Here.
Linda Newton Curtis.
Yeah.
Mike Griffiths.
Here.
Avery Hansen.
Here.
Okay, thank you. So shortly, go ahead and open public comments for any items not on the agenda. I do have some comments for items on the agenda. Is there anything not on the agenda that anyone would like to address at a short comment? Please state so now. All right, hearing none, let's move on to consent calendar. Is there a motion regarding last minutes?
Commissioner Wright approved to approve the planning commission meeting minutes from January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. I move to approve.
Counselor Quinn, a second then.
We have a motion in a second to improve the last meeting's minutes. Can I get a vote? All in favor, aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, the minutes from the last meeting are approved. And then moving on to our agenda for tonight, we have a legislative public hearing. And it's regarding DCA twenty-two dash zero 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 two, which is the middle housing land division report. And I'd like to call for any abstentions, conflicts of interest, and objections to jurisdiction. Hearing none, let's go over to the staff report.
Can I interrupt right here, Commissioner Wright? I am to present the typos at this time. I'm just gonna give a list of them. Page one of forty-four, line three, under heading request reads one five one zero zero point zero four zero. Correction, insert a period to the right of number five after the second period, strike zero, replace with a one. Corrected municipal code to read as fifteen point one hundred point one four zero. Page eighteen, fifteen point five oh five point zero two zero. B, omit single line, replace with double line. Section sixteen subsection E of section fifteen point five oh five point zero three zero. Number two, single line omit, replace with double line to ensure this text is added to Newburgh's municipal code as recommended by Brett Music City Engineer and other applicants. Thank you.
Thank you. And duly noted, Steph, did you get all that?
I already said it.
You didn't? Okay, this point, let's go ahead with staff report.
Good evening, everybody. The case before you this evening, well, first of all, my name is Sam Goodmanstead, Assistant Planner with the City of Newburgh. Case before you this evening is a proposal for amendments to Newburgh Municipal Code for Middle Housing Land Divisions, and I will start by entering the entire staff report into the record. To meet the requirements of Senate Bill four fifty-eight and House Bill two thousand one, the City of Newburgh is proposing new language in its municipal code, which would allow property owners to conduct lot divisions for middle housing types. These amendments would allow lot divisions for middle housing types, which includes duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters. These would be permitted in our residential zones R one, R two, R three, RP, AR, SD, and would go through a preliminary and final process. The division would create child lots from the parent lots, and each lot would require its own separate utilities. Each child lot still needs to meet the development standards for each zone like height setbacks and lot coverage. Essentially, you could purchase one side of a duplex and land immediately around it. This process does not apply to vertical divisions. Here are examples for attached and detached duplexes in the R two and RP zones. The minimum size for the parent lot is three thousand square feet, so each child lot would need to be at least fifteen hundred square feet. Here are attached and detached triplex examples in the R one, R two, RP, and AR zones. The parent lot requires a minimum of five thousand square feet, so each child lot would be a little over sixteen hundred square feet. The lot in this picture is five thousand forty square feet, so it is slightly larger than the minimum. It's really up to the applicants to figure out if these middle housing land divisions work for the specific project based on the lot size. These are examples for a quadplex in the R three zone, which has a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. In this scenario, each child lot would be fifteen hundred square feet. This is an example of how utilities could potentially work for an attached duplex. As I mentioned earlier, each child lot requires its own separate utilities, regardless of whether or not it's attached or detached. These are the code sections that are proposed to be amended. In section nine of the staff report that covers NMC section fifteen, two three five zero five zero B, staff recognizes that the numbering system is off and will make the necessary changes. Staff concludes that the proposal meets the statewide planning goals, which are further detailed in your staff report. The proposal meets the applicable goals and policies of the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan, also further detailed in your staff report. The process for the proposed amendments followed the type four legislative procedure. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash three eight three, which recommends that the city council adopts the Development Code amendments. And that will conclude staff's presentation. Thank you.
Public testimony. It looks like our our testimony items here were for the later subject. So was there, was there anyone that wanted to speak for this? I don't see her online. No. Okay. So go ahead and close a public testimony. And well, we already have a staff summary. And no further final comments from staff, I presume?
No further comments from staff.
Okay, so now let's move to deliberation of commission. Any comments, questions, concerns from commissioners?
My question is for Doug Rex, Commissioner Wright. Upon submission, there was a letter concern with the right turn lane.
That is a different case.
Oh.
Commissioner.
I withdraw their question. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question. Commissioner Capri, I would like to just ask Doug if when these lots are divided, do they become separate tax lots? That, so the people that are dividing their lot say they pay twenty-four hundred a year for it. And now they've got another tax lot. Do they pay more for that new tax lot, or is that still under the old property tax?
So Commissioner, if a parcel went through this process, they would be creating new tax slots. So each tax slot would have its own assessed value, and the county assessor would calculate that. If you put a house on it, then there would also be the value of the structure, what's called the improvements that go on that lot. So if you had just a vacant lot and it was five thousand square feet in R one, and you did a duplex, and you create two lots out of that, it creates two new tax accounts. And the county assessor would establish what the value and what would be assessed for, the assessed value for that parcel. Again, once you put a house on it, it adds the improvement value, and the assessor has to calculate that.
So theoretically, sorry, this is Commissioner Newton Curtis, following on from Commissioner Capri's question. So theoretically, depending on whether the person continued to own the full plot or sell the plot, their tax could be reduced or increased depending on how that worked?
Well, let's say you had, let's say, we'll use it this way, let's say you had a five thousand square foot lot, and you already had a house on it and sat over to one side of the lot, which will allow you to divide it and create another lot. So, and this is hypothetical, let's say that you paid three thousand dollars in taxes for the land and the improvement on that five thousand square foot lot. Once you divided it, then the assessor would have to recalculate and say, okay, now you have a twenty-five hundred square foot lot, you still have the house, but now you have less land, so you may be taxed less on the land. Then you've got this vacant parcel, and that the assessor would establish the value for that vacant parcel that was created.
Anyone else? Any other commissioners with comments?
Commissioner Quinn, I have one clarification question, as this is one of my first meetings on the land use application referral as per building official Brooks Bateman. Did we need a checkmark on the review no conflict portion of that by chance? It was page forty-one of the agenda and packet. That one, it was signed, but there was no, that's okay?
That's okay.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Do we have a motion for action?
Commissioner Griffiths, I make a motion to adopt Resolution number two zero two three dash three eight three, recommending that the city council adopt the Development Code amendments.
Second the motion. And we have a motion in a second. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Lynn Quinn?
Laney.
Laney.
Laney Quinn, yes.
Sorry. Jeff Musaw?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Avery Hansen?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Okay, this time I'd like to go ahead and close that. The legislative public hearing and the motion did pass and move on to a quasi judicial public hearing. And along the same lines, this, I'll state that this meeting is to discuss Garfield Street subdivision, and it looks like there is a continuation request. And so if there's just a continuation request, is that the case for this one?
So what you need to do, Mr. Chair, is reopen the hearing. Then you have your continuation request, you would need a motion from a commission member to continue the hearing, March ninth, at seven PM, the Public Safety Building, and then you would need a second, and then you need a vote.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to reopen the meeting regarding S U B three twenty-two dash zero zero one, the one hundred South Garfield Street subdivision. And ask if there are any conflicts, jurisdictions, bias, ex parte contact, or objections. And if there are none, as there is pending request for continuation, let you go with that. Go ahead.
Hello, Commissioners, Ashley Smith, Assistant Planner, City of Newburgh. We did receive a request from the applicant to continue the hearing until March ninth. That was prepared in a memo to you. I believe the applicant is here if you would like to ask any other questions.
One question, or I feel like this is always my role. How close are we to the one hundred and twenty day limit?
The applicant has sent in a request to continue that, so we did anticipate the March hearing and if it were to be appealed to the city council. So the new application end date, I believe, is June fourth.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Wright, I move to continue. Continue.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, we'll ask for a motion to consider continuation. Have to close the public, yep. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to close the public testimony and entertain a motion for continuance.
Commissioner Wright, I move to continue the S U V three twenty-two dash zero zero one meeting to March ninth, next scheduled planning commission meeting.
At seven PM.
At seven PM.
At the public.
At the Public Safety Building in Newburgh, Oregon.
Commissioner Quinn, a second then.
And we have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call vote again, please?
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Laney Quinn?
Yes.
Jeff Musaw?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Michael Griffiths?
Yes.
Avery Hansen?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes, and the hearing is continued until our March ninth meeting. Next up is another quasi judicial public hearing. This one with regard to CUP twenty-two dash zero zero sixteen, having to do with the Hallworth Hayworth Apartments and request for approval of a twenty-eight unit multifamily building in the C two commercial zone. Well, this time I'd like to open the hearing and discuss the testimony procedure. We'll hear from proponents and then opponents, and they will each have a fifteen minute time limit. And then other speakers on each side will be given an opportunity to speak, and we'll have five minutes. And then we'll go for, and then we'll go to the staff, and I'd like to go ahead and call for abstentions, bias, ex parte contact, and any objections to jurisdiction on this one.
Commissioner Wright, I drive by there all the time, but I will not let it impede my decision making this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and hearing none other, let's go ahead and turn to the staff report.
Mr. Chair, first, Avery has to read the legal language.
Apology, Avery, in the legal language.
O R S one ninety-seven point seven nine seven requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the, list the applicable criteria during his or our presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, L U B A, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at L U B A. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant might request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Avery. Okay, now let's go to staff report.
Okay, hello again, Commissioners, Ashley Smith, Assistant Planner, City of Newburgh. Tonight, I am presenting the conditional use permit and site design review application for the Hayworth Apartments. I will begin by entering the entire staff report into the record. So some application information for you. The applicant is Grove Development, represented by the Pioneer Design Group. The owners of the property are Patrick and Elaine Mavety. Again, the request was for a conditional use approval for a twenty-eight unit multifamily building in the C two district with corresponding design review. That the property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of East Hallworth Avenue and North Springbrook Road. The tax lot there is cited for you. It is in the C two commercial zone, community commercial zone, and so therefore that is why we have the request for the conditional use approval. The applicable criteria that we will review tonight are the Division fifteen two hundred land use application standards, which include the site design review and the conditional use procedures. We'll also review the Division fifteen four hundred development standards, which include lot requirements, yard setback requirements, building and site design standards, and landscaping and outdoor areas, as well as exterior lighting, underground utility installation, signs, off-street parking, bicycle parking, and private walkways. And then last, we'll conclude with fifteen, or Division fifteen five hundred, which is our public improvement standards. Here is the site notated in red. You can see that it's at the southwest corner of East Hallworth Avenue and North Springbrook Road, just north of Highway ninety-nine. Just for a little bit further, we have the Buy Mart parking lot to the left, just above the North Arrow, and to the right is the Safeway and now DCI parking lot. This intersection has been identified in the city's transportation system plan as an intersection for a future traffic signal and is currently being incorporated into the capital improvement programs five-year plan. Here is the site with our zoning overlay. You can see that it is located in the C two zone with the residential zones just to the north of it. Here's the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. You can see the building footprint is located in the southwest corner of the site. Access is off of East Hallworth Avenue up in the left corner, and then the parking lot and other site improvements, landscaping improvements are in the upside down shape. Excuse me, staff identified the following project issues, parking space dimensions and number of required parking spaces. Actually, I should say both of those were corrected in a supplemental that was provided to you. Staff also identified that street trees and landscaping trees are within the public utility easements, and all of these will be addressed further on. So a little bit of history, prior land use actions, starting back, this was part of the Richard Everest Donation Land Claim, number fifty-two. Then it became, in nineteen oh nine, it was plotted as East Newburgh subdivision. And then somewhere between nineteen, or nineteen oh nine and nineteen seventy-nine, there was a lot line adjustment or a partition that occurred, but anyway, in nineteen seventy-nine, there was a different record of survey. But in nineteen ninety-seven, there was a partition, plot ninety-seven five, that did create the tax lot that we have today. So I'll begin with the conditional use criteria. The conditional use criteria, this section is looking for the reasonable compatibility, the proposal's reasonable compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. Applicants' narrative and submitted plans conveyed thought and consideration to the overall design so that it blends in mass and scale of the surrounding commercial properties, yet still maintains its identity as a residential development. The site is located thirty feet to the south of the R two medium density zone, a zone that outright does permit multifamily dwellings. As an example, just six hundred feet to the north in the R two, a large multifamily development was completed there this spring. The site location does provide access to public facilities, utilities, which will be further outlined. So therefore, this criteria has been met. The next subsection is asking if the proposal will provide a convenient and functioning level, living, working, shopping, or civic environment, and will be, it will be as attractive as nature, as the nature of the use and its location and settings warrants. The site began, is in the C two zone, so it does provide close access to a variety of shopping, retail, restaurants, and employment opportunities, which do benefit the residents, future residents, and business owners. The proposed design also accommodates for functional living spaces for residents by providing onsite and outdoor common areas. Addressed in more detail later, the design does meet the site and building design standards for multifamily developments. Staff find that this meets the intent to create a development that is attractive as the nature and use and its location warrants. And then lastly, subsection C is that if this proposal meets the code, the Newburgh, excuse me, Newburgh municipal code. So there were no conditions of approval that were applied to the conditional use permit. So now we'll move on to the site design criteria for multifamilies. Let's see, there are twenty design element points that are required for multifamily projects with nine or more units, and this one does have twenty-eight, so the development was required to show how they are going to ensure good design standards, a healthy and attractive environment for residents and neighborhood compatibility. They have to address that through site design elements or building design elements. And the applicant did propose that they were meeting ten points under the site design and ten points under the building design, and those are outlined in your staff report. I do want to make a correction that under fifteen two two zero zero six zero, which is the criteria for the building bays, it's worth three points, and the findings that I had stated that at one point was earned, however, three points were earned. So moving on to our development standards for lot requirements, this tax lot is an existing lot or record, and no proposals to alter the dimensions are proposed. Per municipal code fifteen four oh five zero four zero, lot coverage and parking coverage limitations do not apply in developments in the C two districts, so therefore all criteria have been met. Moving on to setbacks, C two developments must maintain front yard setbacks of ten feet that contain no parking and must be landscaped. This lot has frontage along East Hallworth Avenue and North Springbrook Road, requiring a ten-foot front yard setback along those adjacent property lines. The site plans submitted do show a ten-foot landscape buffer from the property. However, parking is proposed to occur in this area, and that will be addressed at a later section. Moving on to interior yard setbacks for the commercial zone, C two developments are not required to maintain, excuse me, are not required to maintain interior yard setbacks when the property abuts other commercial property. The site does have interior property lines along the west and south lines, and the site plans do show a setback being maintained, but is not required because those other properties are also zoned commercial. Last setback criteria to be addressed is the vision clearance setbacks. All visual obstructions from two and a half feet to nine feet tall shall not be located in the twenty-five foot or fifty-foot vision clearance triangles. The site is located at the corner of two intersecting streets, so a fifty-foot vision clearance triangle does apply to that northwest corner of the property. A condition to remove a tree proposed within the fifty-foot vision clearance triangle has been placed. The twenty-five-foot vision clearance triangle at the service entrance along from East Hallworth is compliant, and there's also a fence being proposed on the property that does also need vision clearance setbacks. Moving on to the building height, or building site design standards with, for building height limitations, the C two does not have a height restriction. The proposed design will be an average of thirty-six point six five feet with a maximum ridge height of forty-three point four feet. Again, this design is meant to match the scaling and mass of the adjacent property developments. So moving on to our landscaping criteria, ground level units for multifamilies are required to have accessible outdoor space that have some type of privacy screening. The outdoor space was provided, however, the elevation plans that were submitted didn't show what type of screening will be used. So a condition has been placed that those be shown at the time of the building permit applications. Shared individual outdoor space square footage is required based on the number and type of units. The calculation then provided, the applicant was required to provide five thousand six hundred square feet and is proposing six thousand four hundred and ninety square feet. I did want to note that there was a correction to the staff report table for that. I had the finding, in the table, it stated six thousand five hundred and ninety-seven square feet, but it should be that six thousand four hundred and ninety square feet, which is also stated in the findings. So further landscaping, multi developments are required to main fifteen percent landscaping. The applicant is proposing thirty-four percent. All parking and landscape island landscaping percentages are being met. A condition to place two different plant species according to fifteen four twenty zero one zero three D along the west property line adjacent to the drive aisle has been placed. The site plan only showed one species and two different species would be required. There also is the condition that has been set for the owner to main landscaping on the lot and within the landscaping strip. This is more of just a canned condition. This is more of just a canned condition that something that the applicant did acknowledge, but we just like to reiterate that. Okay, this is our last slide for landscaping. Street trees are typically required if site conditions allow. North Springbrook Road and East Haworth Avenue have curb tight sidewalks, so therefore they don't contain traditional planter strips. And street trees have been proposed within the property lines along East Haworth Avenue and North Springbrook Road. However, a ten-foot public utility easement is required along North Spring Springbrook Road. So therefore, a condition has been placed to state that no structures or large trees can be within that easement. This was one of the staff identified issues. So it can, so we're hoping that there could be a redesign to somehow still allow for street trees to be placed along North Springbrook Road, but we will see that at the building permit. If there is that redesign to for those street trees, another condition has been placed to ensure that if the street trees are placed, that they would be planted twenty five feet from any street lamp. So moving on to our lighting, exterior lighting, we have a condition or in the code, it says that point five foot candles cannot trespass at the property lines. Light trespass is occurring along the west and south property lines, so a condition to provide revised photometric plans for medium level and high level lighting has been placed. Light trespass is occurring along the north and east property lines, but that's falling to public sidewalk and street, so staff find that that trespass would not be a negative impact. Moving on to the signs criteria, there has been a condition to submit a separate sign review. There was signage included on the architectural renderings. Typically, we don't see signs at this stage, so this is just the clarification that that a separate permit will be needed when that time comes. Next, we have our trash enclosure. Multifamily and commercial developments are required to have some type of trash enclosure that was submitted on the plans. And they do meet the material standards of concrete masonry units. However, the there was a roof on the design and that is not a requirement, so we would just like them to work with waste management to determine that the proposed design and location will be compatible for for waste management. Okay, moving on to the parking criteria, this is where two of the other staff identified issues have come up and that are were revised in that supplemental information. The first was forty spaces are required and staff had originally made a different determination, but forty spaces are required and forty three parking spaces are being proposed, so therefore that condition has been met. The second condition was the sparking, excuse me, the parking space dimensions. So full-size parking spaces in this proposed layout are required to be nine feet wide by eighteen feet long. And plans are showing that the showing that the standard parking spaces are only sixteen feet with the remaining required two feet being provided in the front yard setback. However, there's no front, no parking is allowed in the front back, front yard setback. So there's been a condition to revise that or also added on to that condition again in your supplemental information was the ability for the applicant to submit a type one code adjustment that could, if meeting the criteria for that, they could show that they could get a reduced length for that for those parking places. Okay, almost there. So this is the undergrounding of utilities. All unit, all new utilities are going to be undergrounded per the applicant's narrative. However, this condition is going to apply to existing lines along North Springbrook Road. So a condition to provide, again, this was also updated in your supplemental, a condition to provide documentation that one or more exception criteria are are met or to underground existing utilities or pay a fee in lieu. This documentation would be provided during the public improvement permitting stage. Okay, now we're going to discuss the division fifteen hundred fifteen point five hundred public improvement conditions. So we have fire flow easements and permits. A fire flow test will be required to be conducted and the results are to be reviewed reviewed by the fire marshal for approval. There are two easements being required, a ten-foot public utility easement along North Springbrook Road and a fifteen public fifteen foot wide public water line easement on any onsite public water lines. And then again, no structures or large trees are to be located within or encroached into any existing or new easements. And the applicant will be required to provide all easements that have been determined to be necessary and include that documentation of those set easements. There will also be permits required for public improvements for the public improvement process, which will include water, wastewater, ODOT if required, stormwater and erosion control permits. Next, we will talk, these will be the conditions for the sidewalks, street standards and street lighting. So sidewalks applicant will be responsible for replacement of any sidewalk panels along the project site frontage that are not in good condition or do not meet current ADA standards. And this will be determined during the building permit stage. Street standards, they will have to pay a traffic impact fee for the Springbrook Road and Hayworth Avenue intersection. Again, this intersection has been identified in the city's transportation system plan for potential future intersection improvements that include a traffic signal. The thing, the condition has been placed that there'll be a single access driveway on East Haworth Avenue to be the at the west end of the property, which was shown on the site plan, which makes it be the furthest from the intersection. And then because the access of East Haworth is because it's a lower functional classification. And then street lighting analysis of East Haworth Avenue and Springbrook Road will also be required. Okay. Last set for the division fifteen five hundred conditions are for water, wastewater and stormwater improvements. On so for water improvements, onsite fire hydrants will need to be public and served by a public water line with a fifteen foot public water line easement. The applicant will be required to verify capacity of existing water wastewater lines. Excuse me, verify capacity that the existing wastewater line is adequate for the proposed development. And then the applicant for stormwater, the applicant will require to record a stormwater facility, private maintenance agreement. And then all all improvement plan, excuse me, all improvements will require to have plans and that which will be reviewed by for compliance with the city's standards, including public works, design and construction standards. Okay, so we did receive one public comment yesterday, February the eighth from Terry Cost. And that was included also in your supplemental information. The concerns that were addressed are concerns regarding the traffic flow at the intersection of North Springbrook Avenue and East Haworth Avenue as well as the intersection of Springbrook Avenue and, or excuse me, Springbrook Road and Highway ninety nine. So again, the street standard condition was required for the applicant to pay a traffic impact fee for the Springbrook Road and he with Haworth Avenue intersection. Because again, this this intersection was identified in the city's transportation system plan. The applicant also did submit a traffic study that showed the twenty eight units will generate an estimated twelve trips during the AM peak hour and fifteen trips during the PM peak hour. And that traffic study also did identify that signaling the North Springbrook Road and East Haworth Avenue intersection would bring that intersection performance, intersection performance with within the city's performance standards. All right, so we've made it. So to staff's recommendation. So staff recommend recommends that the commission move to adopt planning commission order twenty twenty three dash oh four with conditions approving conditional use permit CUP twenty two dash zero zero one six in site design review DR two 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 dash zero zero one one, the Hayworth Apartments, CM Hill County Tax Lot R three two one six CB zero zero eight zero zero. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Well, thank you. Okay, let's move on now to public testimony as the applicant present. Okay, please come forward and state your name for the record and then you have fifteen minutes to present.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Wayne Hayson, H A Y S O N. And I'm with Pioneer Design Group, representing the applicant Grove Developments. My address is nine zero two zero southwest Washington Square Road, Suite one seven zero Portland, Oregon nine seven two two three. I just want to start tonight by passing on the applicant's apologies. He's unable to be here tonight. He would have liked to have been here. He it is a project that he's very excited about and has worked long and hard on to try and bring to fruition. We've been excited working with him on this project and the energy that he's bringing to to the development. We also just wanted to thank staff for their assistance working through this project. Ms. Smith has been incredibly responsive and communicative and understanding of all our ideas and thoughts, so we do really appreciate that. So it is a twenty eight unit multifamily apartment building. It contains twelve two-bedroom units and sixteen one-bedroom units. I'll try and whip through these because staff's done a good job of explaining them all, but it is in the C two zoning district, the commercial two. We have residential to or R two to the north, which is the Azalea Park manufactured home facility. Site is located on the corner of the intersection of Springbrook Road and Haworth Avenue across from the Springbrook Shopping Center. And we can see diagonally across the highway is Fred Meyer and immediately adjacent to our west is the Buy Mart. The preliminary site plan, as you can see, it's a relatively constrained site. Some of the issues that we were dealing with is you can see running, if you start at the intersection, the corner there of Springbrook Road. You can see a an easement that runs across the property that is, I believe it's forty eight inch stormwater pipe in that easement, so that does create challenges obviously for locating development on the site. The fact that we have two very busy roads, Haworth Avenue and Springbrook Road dictate the location of our access as well. And so that sort of drove the location of the building in the corner there and the location of the parking. And we've worked to try and soften that parking edge in the frontage with landscaping as to the extent that we can. We've also provided for residents at the south, along the south property line, open space consolidated there so that that is away from the street and provides a more comfortable environment for residents of the building. And to look at the building elevations, obviously, these are architectural renderings. I just acknowledge the comment about the sign. Again, they are architectural rendering, so we did include those there, but we are aware that we'll need to apply for sign permits for any monument signs or naming signs prior to building permit issuance. You can see there's quite a lot of landscaping around the perimeter of the of the site. There, we acknowledge the comments regarding the landscaping plan. And we will work with staff to make sure that we have appropriate species and the diversity that staff is looking for. I know in the staff report that there is a comment about the ash trees and the problem with ash borer. So we're on board with working with with staff to address the the type of street trees we have there. Essentially, what we've tried to do is have trees that have visual interest all throughout the year. And so we'll work to continue that continue that planting style to make sure that there is that visual interest there. On the this image, you can see some of the building elements. You can see that we have the covered porchway there with a pathway leading directly from the front door of the building out to the street. We have designed that to be a different material than the surrounding pavement, the surrounding parking lot pavement, so that it is well-defined and visually easy to locate and does encourage hopefully movement from the front door out to the street for pedestrians. And again, some of the architectural rendering, some of the building design elements. We have a hip, the hip roof that's that's requested by the code or preferred by the code. We have varying siding materials and colors. We have horizontal offsets along much of the the facade of the building, just to provide that visual interest and define the building and the the separate units as well. And the last, last of the architectural drawings just shows the consolidated open space area at the rear of the building. You can see that there is an overhang there with the second and third floors can to leave it over the ground floor. That provides some shelter during the winter months and also some shade during the summer months. We have also a bocce ball court. We have more plantings in a walkway, which we envisage as somewhere for people to hopefully take their pets out to have an area they can exercise and get outside. And also, we have the the raised garden planters there as well to allow other recreational and gardening opportunities for residents. So in terms of looking at the street tree and open space planting plan, this is the actual landscaping plan that's been prepared for the site. So you can see that we have removed trees from the vision clearance triangles. And I'd just point out, I think, I'm not sure if there was confusion around the circular at the intersection of Haworth and Springbrook that is a large manhole that's located there, so that that one isn't a tree. I know there were some of the architectural renderings with trees in that triangle, but we have, we have addressed and accommodated that as well. You can see the the large area of open space that's located along the southern boundary. And certainly a lot of effort and attention has gone into making this an attractively landscaped space. Something that will benefit the residents and pedestrians as well, walking along the frontage. You see, there's there is significant perimeter landscaping along the boundary of the of the site and we understand the city's requirements for street trees as it relates to easements and will work to revise that with with staff as we go through that engineering review process. So again, we appreciate staff working on the revision to conditions. We agree to, we agree with the changes. There are just a couple of things that we wanted to mention or point out. And one of those is around condition ten A underground utilities. So there is a requirement here to underground the existing overhead utilities along the project site frontage or to pay a fee in lieu for the future undergrounding of these overhead utilities. In accordance with Newburgh Development Code, Section fifteen four thirty point oh one oh A. All new utility service to the site will be provided underground. But in accordance with subsection B, existing utility lines should be placed underground when they are relocated. And no portion of the project is impacting those power lines. They're not being relocated or otherwise impacted by by the development. So with no need to relocate the existing overhead utilities with the project, undergrounding wouldn't be required pursuant to section NMC, section fifteen four thirty point oh one oh, and that says A there, it should be B. At page fifty two of the planning commission staff report, it found that it is anticipated that future improvements for a traffic signal at the intersection of North Springbrook Road and East Haworth Avenue will require that the existing overhead utilities be undergrounded Will require that the existing overhead utilities be undergrounded or relocated. So the city anticipated that the future intersection improvements will require relocation of the overhead utilities. Um, as was mentioned earlier, the um, the traffic impact assessment. Looked at our trip generation to that intersection, um, and the maximum trip generation was found to be thirteen P M trips. Uh, against fifteen hundred and fifty background P M peak hour total trips through the intersection. So, uh, in the world of traffic engineering, that gives us a zero point eight four percent impact on that intersection. Uh, so with the utility relocation not triggered by the development project, but rather that future intersection project. Um, we have a zero point eight four percent impact on that. Or or causative impact on the need for that um traffic improvement. So the hundred percent um cost of of relocating those overhead lines. Is going to be something that's prohibitive for development of the site. As the, as the intersection improvement is causing the need for utility relocation, the cost of utility undergrounding should be considered. A part of the cost of that capital improvement project. Um, and just to add to that, um, I have spoken with P G E staff about those lines. Um, it's incredibly difficult to get uh an actual cost. Um, our preliminary estimate from our construction manager would be somewhere in the vicinity of a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To relocate those lines and part of the issue is, uh, there are three line, three poles across the frontage of our property of the site. Um, each one of those has a uh service coming off it and down the pole. To serve businesses in the area. So each one of those three poles that's to be moved would require a vault. To um accommodate those services coming in at that area. So we would essentially be uh upgrading. Those private businesses serviced along the frontage there. Um, we would also have to. Uh, the those underground lines have to come up somewhere and um it would not be appropriate. Usually you have them come up at the at the edge of your property. Um, it wouldn't be appropriate to have them come up at the edge of um that well, at that intersection. Either on our side of the road or the other side of the road. So we would have to um bore those lines across uh Hallworth. We would then have to take them down, either put a new pole at that intersection, at that side of the intersection or go further down. To the one that's outside the manufactured home park. And that's a distance of two hundred and eighty feet from the first pole down to where we would then connect to the existing overhead. Service, um, and that, that pole also has um other services running off it and down underground. So that would be additional vaults. So each of the four poles would require the addition of vaults to um provide that underground service. So, um, what we're asking is either that uh condition ten A be deleted or otherwise modified to reflect. Um, and uh the essentially proportional impact of the development on public facilities and services for the intersection improvement. Um, yeah, just moving on lastly to the parking, um, if I go back to the site plan. We are happy to work with staff on looking at reconfiguring. Or ways we can reconfigure the parking area to meet, meet staff's requirements. Um, one of the things that we immediately are looking at are um the fact that we have around the perimeter of the building. Adjacent to the parking area, we have seven-foot sidewalks currently designed. I believe the code requirement is four-foot sidewalks. Uh, the reason we've got the seven-foot sidewalks there is because we were going to be, we had the sixteen-foot parking spaces. Um, and with the seven-foot sidewalks, we can have a two-foot bumper overhang. Uh, and still have a five-foot clearance on the sidewalk. Um, that's pretty standard as far as we're aware around the region and also around the city. Um, we've seen that on a number of different projects. Um, but I guess just to give you some certainty that we are able to or going to be able to make those changes. Uh, obviously, we've, we've got um some compact stalls. We can move those around a little bit. Um, if we reduce the size of the sidewalk to five feet, we get the extra two feet on the length. Um, of those parking stalls to make the sixteen-foot long stalls eighteen foot. Um, and so knowing that we do have those, those areas of uh rural room, I guess. Um, we are happy to work with staff to come up with the best solution and provide uh the most, I guess, safe and functional parking area. That we can um while meeting those code requirements. So we are accepting of that condition as well and and staff's recommendations there. Otherwise, that ends my presentation, other than to uh say that we do have the senior engineer. Who's worked on the project, Luke Lappin from Pioneer Design Group, uh, here as well tonight to answer any questions you might have. Uh, and we also have Kurt Olson, the architect for the building. If you have any questions relating to the building and and site. Layout as well. So thank you for your time.
And thank you, do um, any commissioners have questions at this point?
Planning Commissioner, right? You see on your drawing that the raised beds um kind of look like they're metal. Um, do you plan on having a water source there?
Sorry, can you repeat?
Do you plan on having a water source there, those raised garden beds with the metal? It crakes a high heat sink. I don't know if you're considering another kind of.
We would have, we would definitely have to have a water source, whether that be um a a tap for connecting a hose. Or whether that be uh for um watering cans and things, but we definitely wouldn't, will need and provide uh water for those.
And Commissioner Wright, and my second question is for Doug. Can you please comment to the commission about the underground lines? And their request to be deleted from this project.
I will pass that on to our senior engineer Brett Music.
Good evening, Commissioners, Brett Music, Senior Engineer with City. Um, we appreciate the applicant kind of pointing out early on, kind of the elements with the issues. And things you're identifying now, those are not in the applications, materials we had. Um, kind of expressing, kind of going back to the code requirement for the undergrounding. It does in that fifteen point four three zero point one zero. Item B, there's two components of that. The first is the, if their utilities are impacted, the poles are impacted, that's typical scenario. The second component of that is if there is an addition or remodel requiring a type two design review. I think a building going on to a vacant site, it's that addition into a site. So we are in that type two design review. So we do have that requirement in the code. So eliminating the condition, we don't see as a, as an option. The second, there are some exceptions criteria there, and I think you went through a number of things that you've identified tonight in in the research and looking at that. That could lead its way to one of those exception criteria, most likely probably the, the cost of the undergrounding extraordinarily expensive is one of the options. The other is physical factors to make the undergrounding extraordinarily difficult. So with the condition that as it was revised, was intended so that during the plan review process, you can provide documentation that shows those can do. If if those condition, exception criteria are met, then that would be, that condition would be satisfied.
Thank you for that and um I appreciate the the clarification there. And we also, um, I do want to point out that we're, we're aware of uh our responsibility. And when, as it comes to our frontage and and um improvements there and things that benefit the community as well. And we're not trying to sidestep that responsibility where um are willing to to pay the. Our proportionate share to um ensure that uh the intersection improvements work and that everything is taken care of as it is. So um we're happy with the clarification to work with staff to um come to a a agreeable compromise there.
Uh, thank you for that. Did that answer your question, Commissioner? Right? Okay. Any other questions really quickly?
Mr. Newton Curtis, yeah, I love all the landscaping ideas you have. I think that's so important for the community. Um, I heard Ms. Smith say something about um hoping for a redesign for the trees. And I'm wondering if you could say a little more about that. I was a bit confused about where that was and how that was um gonna work.
Um, I'll have a shot at it first. Um, I think first of all is the the ash trees and the um the issue with that. So we're aware of that. Then there is a condition for a ten-foot public utility easement along the frontage of the site. Um, which doesn't exist there at the moment. So currently, the landscape plan is showing street trees within that easement. Um, not being able to put trees within that easement is incredibly, makes it kind of difficult to comply with the street tree requirements. Because we wouldn't be able to plant those trees within the first ten feet. Um, there is some space in front of the um of the property line. Between the property line and the sidewalk that we can um hopefully utilize. Um, although there are the power lines and utilities through those areas as well. Um, then there's uh streetlights. We're not allowed to put trees within twenty-five feet of the streetlight. Um, we're required to do a street lighting plan to see if there's any additional illumination. Um, needed on both frontage streets as well. So that may have an impact on the tree locations. So I think that uh what staff was referring to there is um not necessarily that we don't have enough trees. Or we haven't done enough, um, but that there might be some other factors that we need to consider when we're looking at that and that. Um, I, to put words in in staff's mouth, that they'll work with us to make sure that we can get those. As many trees as we can in there, um, meeting all of the city's requirements.
Yes, Ashley Smith, Assistant Planner, I can um second that as whereas we're, we're recognizing that that ten-foot um public utility easement. Has uh kind of trumps the street trees being in there. Um, yet maybe there's other space in that landscaping area that's outside of that utility easement that trees could go. So, um, while the applicant did do their best to meet the requirement, and they were. Um, again, that ten-foot public utility easement is now requiring um trees to not be placed there. So we're just hoping that trees can be relocated somewhere else.
And I'll add to that, that the landscape plan has been developed by a registered landscape architect. Um, some of the things that he was particularly working on was trying to make sure, one, as I mentioned earlier, that there was visual interest throughout the year. But also that um there was a lot of contrast in terms of um textures and shapes of plants. And um then also that they, he, we did have a long discussion about the use of native plants. And he's used natives where possible, but his primary concern has been for tolerance and making sure they're plants. That'll succeed in the environment that they're in. Um, and so, uh, I guess my point really is just our, the commitment to making sure that the landscaping does work. Um, and is appropriate for the area.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Dale, I mean, uh, I don't know if this is a hundred percent uh relevant to your application. But what's, what's the going to be the price per unit, give or take uh per month for your development here?
Unfortunately, I'm not aware of what the the rate that they were looking at for those are or is. Um, let me just check and and see if Mr. Olson is more familiar with that.
My name's Curtis Olson with Olson Group Architects, uh, project architect. These would be market rate apartments, uh, one-bedroom units. Be probably, and again, this is going to be somewhat determined about what the market is at the time, the completion and occupancy. But probably targeting, starting somewhere in the eighteen hundred dollar a month range. The two-bedroom units are going to probably be in the two thousand to twenty-two hundred. And there might be some fluctuations depending on what the market acceptance is at the time the completion.
Thank you.
And thank you, just um, and and one quick comment with, that I I'd like to add to. I I understand it's not a component of code or anything, but as an advocate, I always feel compelled to um suggest. That um with these multi-family units, you look at um electric vehicle, um, charging facilities. As an electric driver, I think that's something that could drive value, add value and and things to properties and stuff. So, again, I know it's not a component of code or anything, but it's something I like to throw out there.
What do you have? Where that fits in our guest or unassigned parking spaces and the ability. So I think there's, there's an ongoing discussion about that.
Commissioner Wright, I do believe there is also state funding for putting in stations now. So you might want to look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's nothing else from right at this point, um, from the applicant, let's go ahead and go to the public testimony. And thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And first up, um, looks like I'm Terry Cos. Are you here if you'd like to come up? Uh, state your name for the record and you have five minutes to speak, sir.
My name is Terry Cos. I've taught the high school for thirty years and and lived along Springbrook for over a quarter of a century. So I've passed the road for the last twenty-five, thirty years, uh, both bicycle and car. And committing to work. Anyway, uh, there there's certainly a bottleneck there when the the A-dec folks get off work and Yushio gets off work. And uh, living in the neighborhood for over a quarter of a century, I'm sort of anticipating North Springbrook. Developing Austin's property along the hills there, along the uh big hotel. And and to the west too, people will be coming through there. And uh, the traffic, I'm certain, in the next ten years, if development keeps on the way it is, will will double. That means the bottleneck will be twice as long. And we've had lots of opportunities in the past. To put a turn lane there. But it's never been done. This will be the last opportunity we have right now. So if there's no turn lane coming up with this project, there never will be one. So I'd like you to consider that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, is um Jim Harney, if you'd like to come up?
He is on Zoom.
Okay. Are you there, Jim?
Hmm, see a steep honey, but and he's not going to panelists, so. Oh, here he goes.
Okay, then if um that's it for the um comments. Oh, we do. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Are you there? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is James Harney. I've lived on uh Sika for over twenty years. And I've been at Springbrook and Hayward, and how it is a bottleneck. You have buses going in and out of Springbrook and Hayward. Now, according to my notes, there are twenty-eight. Uh, apartments going to be there, twenty-eight spots. And I figured out there's fifty-six parking spots they need. They're asking for forty-three off-street parking. Now, that's going to be a pain in the butt on Hayward. For all these and he was saying that they're going to redo the, their parking area. Is that going to be back in parking? So when these trucks back in, they're going to be on the sidewalk. And my notes say there's nineteen one-bedroom homes, uh, bedroom apartments. And nine two-bedroom apartments. According to him, it's sixteen and twelve. Now, if you keep on adding the double uh brooms, that's going to be more vehicles for that apartment complex. Uh, they figured that out. And on Hayward, you have bicycle people that use that street to park. So they don't park in Safeway Parking Lot. to park so they don't park in Safeway Parking Lot or Bymar Parking Lot. They park out on the street. And if you look at Deborah going towards the school, there's parking on both sides and there's vehicles on both sides. So what I'm recommending is to them find a better place to put this uh apartment complex. Because I've been here and the the city keeps on talking about a stoplight, stoplights, and I haven't seen it. And if you look at the the length of the road, you're gonna have backing up on ninety nine W. So I don't see how this can work in that one little corner. Unless you come up with a better plan. Because I don't see how it's gonna turn out. You don't have no right when you're coming off of Springbrook in Hayward. You don't have a turning lane to get into the apartment complex. So you're gonna come to a complete stop. You're gonna back up Hayward into uh Springbrook. So now you got a traffic jam. So they need to reduce the city and the apartment people need to reduce something off of Springbrook and Hayward. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Um, let's move over to there any written correspondence to be read?
First of all, you have to allow rebuttal. First of all, you have to allow rebuttal by the applicant.
I thought I needed to allow written correspondence if there was any to be read and then rebuttal. Okay, okay. So at this time, yeah, if the applicant would like to come up for rebuttal to anything we've heard.
Uh, Wayne Hason again for the applicant. Um, I guess my my main response would be that the city has plans within the TSP for improvement of that intersection. Um, we do have we are required to pay a proportional share towards the improvements of that intersection. Um, I think that the it the issue of congestion at that intersection is something that's that pre-exists this development and will um exist after this development. But it is something that the city has anticipated or or is aware of. It is something that they have planned for in their formal planning documents um from the intersection. And so uh I think it is something that we've addressed to the extent that we can.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I'm going to um close the public testimony portion of the hearing and ask for final comments from staff and recommendation.
Staff have no further comments and um the recommendation stands.
I didn't commission right. I have a question. Are are there double lines painted on Hayward? Can they even turn on that lane? Or will they be forced to go down a different road to be in the right-hand lane facing Safeway to turn in? Can they even cross right there?
Ashley Smith Assistant Planner, um, I'm not familiar exactly with what the um public right of way is there. Um, so I I apologize.
It's not hundred percent clear. If you look at the size of this versus that one.
From the aerial photograph, it does appear to be a double line. Um, current existing uh painting of the road would not allow them to turn in anyway. Would that be correct?
Senior engineer brought music again. Um, the question is, is whether there is ex- currently existing double yellow line? Or if on Hayward, excuse me, yes.
So if somebody come off Springbrook, turn left on the Hayward and then try to get in this proposed place, would they be able to cross there because there's double yellow?
I'm not hundred percent certain that double yellow linings currently exists. It is something that could be added into a a condition.
Actually, it looks like from the aerial photograph that was just pulled up, there is existing.
Yeah, so it's you know, confirming that and we can can do that. One thing I'll note is that kind of with the improvements with the intersection, it's the traffic signal, but it's it is improvements that would look at at those like any restriping and elements there as well when that occurs. I will also reiterate what Ashley had indicated. I have confirmed that the capital improvement program that is being developed for the next five years is bringing this project into with to be within that five-year timeframe.
And Doug.
The intent.
Commissioner Wright, um, what is the estimated timeframe for that to occur?
For that traffic signal and the intersection improvements, that's what I was just I was speaking to is it's anticipated to be within. It's being intended for the five-year plan for twenty three to twenty eight.
So it's not on the top of the list or the middle?
It's it's it is.
Just on that list.
I actually spoke with the assistant engineer this eve- before this meeting to confirm where it's being looked at, and she's working through the numbers. It's actually being developed for the next five years, current rate it was earlier today. So it is being worked into that element. It'll probably land somewhere in the middle, I would expect.
If I may, uh, I'm not a traffic expert, but I suspect in this particular case, should this development go in, that the residents will adapt to the traffic situation at the intersection of Springbrook and Hayward and go around to Deborah Road to be able to turn right into this development.
Well, I think one Doug Rex, so one thing to remember is that the site has to have access, cannot have access off of Springbrook Road, but has to have access off of Hayward. And the developer has designed it following the city's guidance and moved it absolutely as far west as you could go. So it's part of a public improvement permit if they need, if there is a double line out there. I drive it all the time and don't pay attention. Um, if there is a double line, it may be that it has to be shortened so that you can get into the into the site, but they gotta have site access.
And a comment, yeah, on the on the double yellow line thing, I I would concur. I I come down there and I turn left in a I and I I so I'm not sure that that would be a big factor or if it would be even something because I'm not sure on the provisions, but I thought that a double yellow line could be crossed if accessing a driveway, but not a road, but I I could be wrong. But I just wanted to add too, there's another component to consider is it's a pretty walkable place. I mean, there's a lot of shopping. It's in the walk zone. Um, to grade, middle and high schools. So that's something that could appeal to families, too. I mean, here you're across the street from Safeway and, you know, Bymars there and everything. It's probably easier to walk to the store than than jump in the car and drive. So that that that's that's a I would take as a positive.
Commissioner Quinn, or I'm sorry, are you finished? Did you have more?
Oh, just a comment. I really wanted to thank the uh builders uh for considering single-unit homes. As current statistics are showing, twenty five percent of the population has a tendency to be single. So that is appreciated.
Commissioner Quinn, I was um curious, um, right, I mentioned that it was part of the five-year plan to get the lights installed, and I think we all know that that intersection could definitely use it. Do but per the public comment, do we know if there is in fact actually a turn lane? That are like a spot that would be for turning in there, or it would be just be the lights that is part of the five-year plan?
As kind of with the five-year plan is the signal light, the intersection with the right turn lane going out to to ninety nine and and that part of it, that's that is part of the ODOT intersection and their fierce sphere of influence extends along this frontage along North Springbrook Road, so they require an ODOT component on that piece of it. The improvements as for the project of not, there's not a design level of components that gets to that stage. It's been developed at this point. Um, as I understand with the project and mitigation of the traffic signals and and from the traffic study that had been done back with part of the transportation system plan and develop that project as well as the traffic study, there's a question of the applicant, it's indicating that that adequate queuing and and will be some that occasionally will exceed the um level of service intent of queuing at the ninety nine W intersection, but be occasional. And so does the warrants for other improvements are not likely to be met for other get it mitigation measures. The signalizing is intended to do that with synchronization with the signals at ninety nine in Springbrook.
Yeah, Doug Rex again is just sort of just a piece of information for the commission. We have been collecting from other developments that have occurred in this area. Uh, their proportional share to apply towards that traffic signal. So when Brett's talking about, you know, putting something in the five-year plan, we're not starting at zero. Um, on the funding to be able to do this, uh, city engineer and I've talked before, there was some and Brett just mentioned the sphere of influence of the ninety nine Springbrook also extends up to the Hayward piece. And so there were funds from other developments, the apartments to the north, stuff to the east, who've been putting funds in to make improvements at this particular intersection.
Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners or?
Commissioner Capri, I just wanted to really congratulate the designers of this complex. I think they have done a very good job. I I like everything about it. I even like the bocce ball courts. I think that they have done a really good job of making it livable. Uh, I think that pedestrian access to all the stores, it just seems like a really wonderful use of that particular spot. And I think that um doing this conditional permit, conditional use permit is um a really good thing to happen there. Congratulations.
Well, moving on from that, um, can I get a resolution?
Um, Commissioner Quinn, um, I move that we adopt the planning commission order two thousand three dash zero four, which approves the request to conditionally use permit and design review for the attached conditions approved by. Did I read that right?
Commissioner Newton Curtis, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Laney Quinn?
Yes.
Jeff Musa?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Avery Hansen?
Yes.
And congratulations, the resolution passes unanimously. So moving on this evening, we'll go to new business. And with that, um, Doug, are you gonna do the guidelines update?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will. So at the last meeting, it was suggested, then motioned, and then seconded, voted on for a couple of minor corrections to the participation guidelines. And so I have done that. So I have put in your packet a track changes version, so it makes it easy to follow. It's nice there. It's in red. So that's an attachment. Um, so the first one was under rule three point five, where we clarified that the student commissioner is a voting member. And then under rule four point four, based on the conversation is for our new members, it will read newly appointed members will be placed at the bottom of the current uh rotation to allow them to serve at least one year uh as a commissioner, then later as chair and vice chair. So I actually went back and listened to the audio. Correct. In addition to my notes. So that is the two changes that were recommended, and so staff would recommend should adopt uh resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three eight seven.
When Commissioner Wright uh moved to adopt G E N twenty-three dash zero zero one, planning commission participation guidelines with updates with attachments P D.
Uh, second motion? And we have a motion and a second. Uh, can we get a vote, please?
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Laney Quinn?
Yes.
Jeff Musa?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Avery Hansen?
Yes.
Congratulations, Doug. The changes are passed.
Oh, Mr. Chair, next up is just your items from staff, and so you have in your packet the annual ethics filing. So it was a letter that came out from Sue. So this is where we start the reminders. And S E I stuff is coming up, statement of economic interest. Um, so you will continue to get communications from us through the city recorder's office to remind you to do it. As we say every year, we cannot do it for you. Uh, something you have to do, but if you need to help with technology to be able to access, that's something that we can do. But we cannot help you fill out the forms, the electronic forms.
Weirdly enough, every single year I have had problems and have needed technical assistance. So I thank the staff for that.
Okay, and it looks like next is a vacation Reynolds research update.
Uh, Chair Musa, Commissioners, my name's Clay Downing, Planning Manager at the city. And I'm just gonna give you a brief oral update on where we're doing on the research. It seemed like there was a lot of interest the last time we met with respect to short-term rentals. So where we're at, we're conducting the research. We're going through it as we can. There are other things that we have basically on our caseload that we're dealing with. As you know, we're down one planner already because we no longer have Mary on the team, unfortunately. We're wishing her well, but we're also trying to make sure we keep all the plates spinning. And then in addition to that, I don't know if it's been announced. May I? Not yet? Okay, uh, Sam will be leaving our team at the end of this month. So today with the middle housing land divisions was, I think, the last time that he's gonna appear in front of your commission. So we're really pleased that he was able to bring that that project forward. But he's gonna be leaving and leaving state. He's gonna be headed back to Colorado, so we're wishing him well. But that's gonna put a little bit of extra pressure, and that doesn't mean we're not working on this and other projects. It's just I wanna set expectations on where we are for this sort of thing, because as you know, those cases that people are really depending on us processing are coming forward. So with that said, um, I wanna move forward into where we're at. So just give you kind of give you some of the bullet points on the outline of research that we're planning on doing. So one of the things that we're gonna expect, and actually, let me back up a second before I say that. If you have questions or comments or thoughts, after I get done going through this, I would be happy to take those from you. And consider those as we do the research. We're gonna go do the research as we think makes the most sense to get you something concise and meaningful and helpful in considering what we take forward to the city council. So your thoughts and comments would be appreciated. So um, some of the background and existing conditions will go into that. So you're perhaps aware that March of last year, the city council received an update related to short-term rentals. So we're gonna take some of that information and we'll be building on it. One of the key components that was a part of that was a scatter plot map and as well as a heat map that was presented at that time, highlighted some of the regulations that came into play in twenty thirteen. Some minor amendments that occurred in twenty sixteen, there was an option to make changes and that was presented last year. The city council decided not to make changes and instead told staff to conduct research. Specifically, they wanted to see some policy approaches associated with non-coastal cities in Oregon that had similarities to Newburgh. So that's where some of the things that we're looking at, and that's some of the existing conditions that we'll see. We're also gonna talk a little bit when I look at those about what we see in short-term activity here in Newburgh. And that's gonna be trying to find information if we can glean it in a helpful way from platforms that conduct short-term rentals. Um, so we're gonna try and find something that's more reliable than me simply going to websites and counting what I can find is available. But we're gonna look at some of the information we have from our transit lodging tax transient lodging tax information, because we do see where those come in. We have some addresses associated with that. And we do have some uh addresses that don't use And we do have some, uh, addresses that don't use a C U P. And the more contemporary way that people have to go through the permitting process because they were occurring before those two thousand thirteen regulations went into place. But also that makes it hard for us to make sure everyone's playing by the same rules. So we're going to try and parse out those numbers in a meaningful way in that research, bring them back so that we can really say, this is what we're seeing, this is where we're seeing it, this is how much of it we're seeing. Um, one of the things I wanted to note is year over year, we do obviously have some of those permitting, those cases that are coming forward. And so the trends that we see, we're going to talk about what we're seeing there. So to note, last year in two thousand twenty two, there were a total of thirteen applications that were submitted. And so one is still in process and will be coming forward, um, later. And the other twelve have already been processed. There were just the year prior to that, there were only five, the year prior to that, there were one, you're proceeding two, year before that, four, year before that, four. So it's been kind of a steady trickle for a few years, but last year we really saw a big spike. And we already have three applications in the pipeline right now for this year that have come in since January first. So we'll talk a little bit about the numbers, what we see from finance and the T L T. And we'll talk a little bit about what we see by the numbers by year. Um, as we move forward, we'll also talk a little bit about considerations for local housing. So short term rentals and vacation rentals in the context of housing in Newburgh. And so that's going to be probably some, some brief discussion associated with housing affordability, housing, uh, both ownership and rental vacancy rates, to the extent that we can find that information. Um, and then one of the items that we want to do is go back through the comments that have been received at, um, during permit processing over the last few years. What has been concerning to people, to what extent were people, what things were of the most concern? And to the extent that we can, we're going to take those qualitative, because that's inherently what they are, qualitative comments that are given to us by the public and try and find a way to characterize them. So we can wrap our heads around that. So how does that get summarized? So we're going to come up with some methodology to try and find meaning in that to the best extent we can. Um, and that, what I'm expecting is based on some of the comments we've heard at recent hearings is that'll highlight things like concerns about safety, concerns about neighborhood fabric, that probably talked about several different ways, but we'll try and parse that out. Privacy, affordability, those sorts of things. Um, and then one of the other major components that we expect is the policy approaches. So we're going to be doing, looking at the policies that are used in other jurisdictions, have some discussion about those. And then one of the outcomes that I would expect, there would be something akin to a policy matrix where we look at the different approaches, look at the towns that are using them and maybe differentiate how those are being applied differently to the extent we can without making that overly burdensome. And that's what we're looking at. So that's it for me as far as an update, but I'd be happy to answer questions or take comments.
As you might expect, I have a question.
Sure.
Counselor, I'm not counselor, God. You said the same thing. Good. That makes you feel a bit better. Commissioner Newton Curtis. So I'm really happy to hear that you're taking, um, account of the qualitative information, you know, people's comments, because one of the things that's concerned me greatly is that residents have taken the time and energy to write letters to come in and testify as if they believe that they're going to make a difference. And with code the way it stands, uh, the likelihood of them making a difference, even though it's so important to the community and to their livability, the likelihood of them making a difference is negligible, less than negligible, if that's even possible. So I'm really happy to hear you say that. Um, I'm wondering a couple of things. First of all, if the city has thought about the possibility of a moratorium. And then second of all, if I understand you're short staffed, I think that's a problem all over the country. You know, trying to get applicants, but I'm also wondering, you know, if there is any kind of timeline for getting some results of the research? Because as they say, times are ticking, you know? So that's my comment, but I do appreciate that you're, you're looking into this. I really, really do.
So we don't have a deadline or a target at this point, but what I can commit to is that each planning commission hearing that it hasn't appeared in front of you, I will remain available to provide an update. And so just by keeping that on the planning commission's radar, I don't know if, um, Director Rex wants to keep it agendized or not, but I will remain available, um, for each of the hearings coming up until we get it delivered. Um, and that will help make sure that we get it on track to get to the city council as well, because that's the destination. They have requested it, but it's, we want to bring it to the planning commission as part of that research process. Since you all hear a lot of conditional use permits involving short term rentals, vacation rentals.
And just to follow up on that, I'm wondering if there's anything that we can do as commissioners to help ease the process along. I don't know if there is, but if there is, I think that we should be thinking about that.
There's, there's nothing that comes to mind at this time, but if someone finds something that's nicely packaged and brilliant and related to those and wants to share that with staff, we'd be happy to take that information. But the outline that I've provided, um, that's information that is for the most part available. Um, there's certainly going through and looking at the different policies jurisdiction by jurisdiction. That can take a little bit of time, but we've a list of jurisdictions that we're planning on looking through. So it's really just finding the time carving out and making that happen. So, thank you.
Commissioner Wright, um, excuse me, uh, even though we have a complaint process, it's, uh, been referred that nobody, there's not any record of any complaints at these. But it kind of turns out according to the chief of police that, um, they really don't know if they're rental units or not, it's just an address to them. Um, is there any way you guys can perform a tracking information system?
I, I have looked into that and unfortunately there's not. So there, and, and I think it's a good question, and that's why I wanted to make sure I was prepared for it. Um, because that would be one of the things I would want to know. And unfortunately, based on the way that the complaints work as they come in and the way that they go into the database, the, the way that it's been kind of coded or flagged by staff in the past, it doesn't give us the level of detail that we can pull that information in any way that resembles useful. And so we've kind of got the entire database. So to the extent that the chief of police mentioned that that's not really available for us to get it, that is correct. And we also don't have a code compliance officer right now who would typically focus on those sorts of complaints and perhaps be able to answer questions even anecdotally for the time that they've been here. The police department is handling and managing those, but not with a staff member that they would typically assign to that. Um, so that's also not empowering us to find more information at this time. But if, if something comes to light that we can use to help understand complaints that have occurred, we'll be happy to use it, but we haven't found that.
Yeah, just short across referencing, um, the S T U's already done to the complaint, um, logs. That's the only thing I can think of in a matrix style setting. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Griffiths, uh, I know that the data, uh, doesn't seem to be there or certainly not mineable. Uh, could we, with the short term rentals that we already know we have and are identified, uh, survey the surrounding residents to say, you know, here are the concerns we hear about short term rentals. What has your experience been? And some of those people maybe might be pleasantly surprised that those things haven't materialized. But in the absence of being able to mine the data from the police department or what have you, ask the people who are living around them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, that is something I'm happy to look into, see if we have something to do that before. One of the things that does give me a bit of hesitancy on that is knowing that if we do that, there's, there's a limited reach that we'll probably get, and it probably won't be statistically valid. So it gives me a question on how, how much weight could we give those results? Now, I don't say that would be bad, because any input that you get from the public is probably valuable, certainly more valuable than having none. But we'll, we'll give that some thought and I can speak with some of our other folks at the department and see if we think that that's going to, going to be helpful, if it's something that we can do. Um, or if it's really just stirring the pot in a way that maybe is less of a research focus and more of a venting session, which is not, certainly we don't want to do it and something that, that really doesn't help us find, um, meaningful policy decisions and meaningful policy information. But that is a good suggestion, so we'll give that some consideration on how that might be able to be done productively.
Can I ask another question? So in your research, do you have specific research questions that you're hoping to answer? I mean, like, for example, you know, trying to estimate the density, for example, I know, I, I know you have that type of information already, but what specifically are the research questions that you're trying to answer with your research?
I don't know that we've defined specific research questions and we're certainly not using that research to test any theories on which, which of these might be the best policy decision. So I would say that this is going to come to this group, probably as more of a white paper where we're looking at the different approaches available, the landscape of jurisdictions that look and feel somewhat like Newburgh, either because they're nearby an organ and share characteristics, perhaps they're a little further field and share characteristics. So one of the things I want to do is essentially a policy analysis. What are the policy options that we have available that would be an approach, that might be an appropriate fit for Newburgh to consider? And then, um, depending on what I begin to see in particularly some of the public comment um, outcomes, might be able to define what can best be done with that policy analysis. So I would say it's a general, what's the, what are the existing conditions now? What are some of the policy options that we have available? If I can find out some level of efficacy on, to what extent people have used certain policies and that they have been satisfied with them, I'll include that as well. Um, and I don't even know if this will necessarily include a kind of a preferred alternative sort of a recommendation. It may simply be informational.
Uh, Commissioner Musa, just an idea here. This kind of seems tailor made for something that if you have, you know, contacts at the high school or like, you know, Avery with the class that this could be a research project that a class could undertake, you know, that, that mine off some of the extra things you talk, you know, about gathering facts, gathering statistics, some sort of class project that, you know, a teacher at the high school might be willing to undertake with his class.
If there's a specific point, I, something I would keep in mind, I've only been in town for like four or five months. So I certainly don't have that contact, but someone may, someone may on our team. If there is a particular contact or a particular teacher that seems ripe to float that with their students and that could perhaps accompany this sort of thing, we would be happy to include it, but city council did request of staff. And one of the things I don't want to do is try and engage in a way that throws the timeline off further. And so if, if we do truly want to get it back sooner rather than later, I'd be a little hesitant. But I think that is a, is a fine suggestion and particularly it would be an interesting conversation. Um, and so if there is a, a point of contact or anything like that, that would be recommended, then we can certainly consider that. Thank you.
Thanks, I'll get to it.
Commissioner Quinn, just, uh, one quick thing, I loved your, um, plate spinning analogy. I think that really kind of demonstrates very well how you guys are low staff and, and an often thankless position that you guys are in. I really thank you very much for bringing that back up and being as diligent as you have been on that. The whole point of what we do is the quality of life for our town and those who visit it. And obviously this is an exceedingly time sensitive and very important topic that seems to be coming to us because of how awesome we are as a town. So thank you so much, the fact that it came up in my first meeting, and this is the second, and you've taken the time to address this. It's deeply appreciated and, um, congratulations to Sam. Presumably this is an awesome thing for you. Definitely want to know where you got that hat, but congratulations. Sorry for the plate spinning position it puts these guys in, but hopefully that's a good thing for you.
Well, if there's nothing else, thank you. And, um, I guess Doug, um, um, anticipated schedule. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have several things. So March, you see, there's quite a list. Well, there's actually one additional thing that got added to it. We have a cell tower that is bound by FCC regulations and we have to review it. And in this case, it has to go in front of the commission. So we have a very busy March ninth with the, uh, the Garfield Street subdivision, housing production strategy, multifamily code audit, water master plan, cell tower, and, uh, Clay's update on vacation rental research. Now, usually we try to keep these to three or four items at a meeting. Uh, there is a potential fallback position, but there's a conflict. Um, March twenty third would be your backup meeting of that particular month. Um, the other day I received notice and there is a planning commissioner training. It's on March twenty third. Uh, it's in Corvallis and it's via Zoom and it's from five to seven P M. So that's where the conflict is, is that it clicks with this meeting, which if you did a second meeting in March, would start at seven P M. Um, do have one variable, the housing production strategy, the city council is not able to get to their briefing on that topic if they're meeting on Monday. So we're looking about where we might refill that on a planning, I mean, on a city council meeting. So the housing production strategy might get moved to April, but I don't know for sure yet. Would there be any interest in having, well, first of all, is anybody interested potentially in go to planning commissioner training? Either going to Corvallis or sitting at home on your computer and doing it via Zoom?
This Commissioner Capri, I thought we got a lot out of the class that we took. Chris and I went to one in Salem, wasn't it, Chris?
Yes.
And, um, I thought it was really good information. And I wouldn't mind, um, sitting through this one just to, uh, you know, get more or reacquaint myself with some of the different things that are important to think about.
Yeah, so this, this training, it's thirty five dollars per person. We have money budgeted for you to do that. And so I, right now I have pretty much a, almost unanimous, people wanting to go do training. So that kind of takes the March twenty third off the table for a second planning commission meeting. Um, so Avery, Mike, Linda, Laney, Chris all want to do the training. So they and I will coordinate that and we will get you signed up. And, uh, I'll get you forwarded the, uh, the little flyer. So the topics is keeping out of hot water, land use decision making for planning commissioners, elected officials, city administrators and planners. So there'll be people from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Uh, they'll go over the basics of local responsibilities, the role of planning commissioners, decision making bodies, ethical behavior, ex parte contact, quasi judicial versus legislative hearing processes and legally defensible findings. Sounds like a riveting two hours.
You're going to send me one too, right?
Yep, you're on the list, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that takes the twenty third off the table. So just be prepared, we have a bunch of stuff. The multifamily code audit, it's, we got a grant from D L C D, so we have a timeline uh, to be able to get in front of the commission, to get in front of the city council, to get a decision of some kind. This is then bundle up all the stuff and get it submitted by the end of May back to the state so we can get our reimbursement. Uh, the water master plan is tied to the new groundwater treatment plant, which is tied to financing for the new groundwater treatment plant. Uh, so that's on a critical path. The housing production strategy is also on a path because we got a grant and similar situation, getting it all bundled up and so forth by the end of May. Uh, so maybe the vacation rental research will be brief, we'll, we'll give you an update. The cell tower should be pretty straightforward. Um, so it shouldn't take very, hopefully very long to do that one. So there's what that part of it. Uh, it was brought up about naming a creek for Denise Bacon. So I forward that on to the city manager, forward it on to the mayor. So I forward that on to the city manager, forward it on to the mayor. And the feedback we got was that they are naming this room, the Denise Bacon Community Room. There will be a plaque and some kind of recognition that will occur. But the mayor also brought up, well, maybe a memorial garden at Memorial Park. By the different idea. So I've set the scene there. It was not receptive of naming a creek process. I haven't named a creek in over fifteen years, but there is a state process that you have to go through.
Yeah, actually I looked it up and weirdly enough. I was working a lot with the U S G S and I didn't realize that they were the body that did the decisions. And it actually takes five years after a person is deceased to do that. So. Yeah.
Things have changed over the years. It wasn't a five year.
Like a garden.
So I followed through with your request on that. There was the request to recognize Commissioner Dale for his longevity and tenure of service at the last meeting. So I have forwarded that on as well and awaiting a response. And then thank you for coming and joining the joint work session with the city council the other night. Family. Design regulations, so we will be making some adjustments based on that conversation. We'll be bringing you back a legislative proposal on March ninth and get some additional feedback from you. And it will come with a recommendation with a resolution. Think that covers all I have.
Well, sounds good, Doug. And I'll go ahead.
I've received a letter from our city manager. For requests to review with the planning commission for that evening. And I will forward it to Faye to have her forward it to everybody. What? It's. I'm sorry. I'm getting tired. Can you state the question?
He said there's.
You said, you said that you forward something to the city manager to remind everybody about an evening. So which, which evening is that?
It is for the March ninth evening. I think it's actually the CAC. Don't we have a CAC meeting, another one soon? Number five?
No, the. The. The housing production strategy. It's citizens advisory committee, which is the Affordable Housing Commission, has a meeting next week on the fourteenth. Which is their final meeting. For them to review the H P S and develop a recommendation to the planning commission and city council.
But I will forward that so everybody else can see what the city council. Mayor and other. Points they would like to bring up with the council.
Okay, well, if that's all, Doug, let's go on to items from commissioners.
Mr. Chair, so I missed the last meeting because I was getting over an injury. And it's my understanding that Commissioner Wright was elected vice chair again after just previously serving as chair for the last year. And it's kind of rough to do chair, vice chair, chair, back to back like that. So my suggestion this evening, Commissioner Wright agreed was. For me to take over after this meeting as vice chair for the rest of the year. And I would be able to fill in for Commissioner Musall for his anticipated absence later this year, if that becomes necessary. But it's something that needs to be voted on by the rest of the commission. So if nobody has any objections, we, I would appreciate to vote on that. So because the, so if nobody's ever gone over this, the whole idea of having a rotating chair is not, is to. Share the responsibilities, not to have like a factional buildup of perceived power from our vast powers as planning commissioner, of course. And to make sure that, you know, people get a chance to do things, but after they've had enough experience to do it. And, and so it's my turn again. I last served as chair in two thousand and nineteen, so it's probably time again.
But in Commissioner Wright, I move to step down as vice chair. And take the pro whatever. Temporary, just for this time until the end of this meeting. And would like to move to appoint Commissioner Jason Dale as vice chair for the remainder of twenty twenty three.
I second that.
A motion and a second. Can we get a vote? A voice vote will be adequate. Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. There you go.
Congratulations.
Okay. Commissioner Wright, there's also a committee orientation on Zoom, February thirteenth at five P M. And I'm not sure, I don't think there's going to be an overlap of, of anything that would be. Presented at a planning commissioner class through the state.
No, this won't be a higher level review of just boards and commissions committees within the city. So it would not get into the, any details on land use.
And then one other thing, when I was looking at some of our documents, I noticed that. We have an invasive species on some of our. Let me move to that area. Our Newberg Stream Corridor Plan, we do have a list for native species that I. On, and I noticed it is as a permitted landscaping bush. So I wanted to know if the commission would agree. If they would. If we could move to adopt Oregon State University's plant species guidelines.
Good idea.
Go get rid of the ivy because that's a real pain.
Yeah.
Tell you what. But from succession and disturbance, yeah. And a bunch of the trees back here in the ravine, some of our oldest, oldest trees here in the city are dying because of Ivy invasion. And I would hope that people know about. Succession and disturbance that regardless if it's somewhere else in Newburgh. It will through air patterns, water hydrology patterns end up in our streams. So even though it may not be there now, they eventually do. As well as a couple other species that I identified on that list. But I am willing to cross reference that list and tell you all the areas where they need to be removed from documents. If that's all right. That's all.
Here, what I heard was Commissioner Wright moving to adopt the O S U plant species list. But if that's something you want to do, then somebody would need to second it.
I will second that.
Exactly. I was just going to ask if that's something we can vote on and if so, can we get a second? Sharon, okay, we got a second from Sharon and then. Would that require roll call vote or is that a?
No, you can do it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes. And I'll, I'll just tell you a quote from a movie I watched with my son about invasion species. His father was trying to get his son to do weeds and he says, the weed is just a plant that you grow, that's growing in a place that you find inconvenient. But on, on that note, if there's nothing else. I'll go ahead and adjourn the February ninth, twenty twenty three, meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission.